Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
Okay, so let's call this meeting to order on Monday, April 20th at 3:00 PM. It's being, it's on Microsoft team due to the coronavirus. I'd like to amend the agenda by adding the school, the cemetery, the purchasing policy, and the fire warden. If everybody agrees, we need a motion to accept that and to amend the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, so we have the minutes of April 6th. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Make a motion, we adopt the minutes as written and submitted.
Stand, you seconded Stan?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, somebody make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
So moved.
We did it.
Sorry, you're right. So now we have a...
Alan Cappy.
Okay. All in favor of the minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, good. Okay, now, what do we have, the warrants? I signed the warrants on Sunday. I'm a little confused. Apparently Michelle sent the minutes warrants, I didn't get them. But it occurred to me last week that we need to have a second person because in the event that I'm sick or I can't attend, can't be there, somebody else has to sign them. So we should have a second person in line in the event that I can't do it.
Just the backup, backup person.
Right.
And I make a motion, Stan, be the second signature as the vice chair.
Okay. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Yeah, because I, it works out well because Michelle does them on a Sunday. I usually see her and then I either stop in or call her and she tells you they'll be done at a certain time, then I go down and sign them and put them on Kim's desk and that's it, so.
So just let me know. Joe, just let me know if you're not going to be able to do that.
Oh yeah, no, no, I'll let you know Stan, sure. Or Bill will let you know, either one. I mean, I could get the virus, I could get a cold or something which I don't want to go in yet.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, the highway report, so we have the bids on Hinkley Brook Culvert. Who's going to open these things?
I was.
Okay.
Okay, timeout. Can we go back? I missed that whole thing because I was trying to get Bill online and I don't know we'll ever get Bill online, but, Bill Brown, but, so the motion was to have Stan be the second to approve the warrants?
Correct.
And who made the motion? I did. I did. Alan.
And who's? And who seconded it?
Kathy. Okay. All right. Now, did you also accept the warrants?
Yes.
I think so.
So did everybody get them except for Joe? Because you were on the list, Joe. I looked on her emails for sent.
Yeah, but I didn't get them. I just got an email from Michelle, but I signed them, so I accept them, obviously.
Okay, there are two sets of warrants. You all received both sets of warrants because I sent them out to you. So you have the warrants of the 10th and the warrants of the 19th. The 19th, we just resent, and that's the one she sent you on Sunday. Everybody got those before this meeting.
Correct.
Did everybody get them?
I got the 19th.
He's got a written page.
I didn't get, I didn't get any warrants for me, but I signed them, but I didn't get any.
The only ones I got are the 19th. I didn't get the 10th.
No, you got the 10th because you asked me about them. A long time ago.
That was the 5th.
You got them the 5th, but they're dated the 10th.
Oh, okay. Well, you didn't have warrants for the 10th, they were for the 5th.
You had the meeting, the warrants, okay. All right, so, okay. All right. So I just wanted to make sure we did that right because you guys have to accept the warrants as well.
Okay, so you want to have a motion to accept the warrants? I don't know for sure. I think we did it, but just in case we didn't.
Yes.
So somebody make a motion?
I have on warrants of, yeah, both sets of warrants, please. Make a motion, we accept both sets of warrants as prepared.
Do we have a second?
Press second it.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, all in favor of accepting the warrants of the two dates, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, good. All right, now we can go to the highway. Open bids.
Okay. Everybody ready for me to open the bids?
We are.
This is how they...
Can I ask one other question procedurally? I have one bid that was emailed in before 4 o'clock on Thursday from Willie Earth. I wrote, and I wrote back to him and I told him, and I think I copied you guys, only if you guys approved it would I accept that bid. So before we open any bids, you need to decide whether or not you're going to accept the bid that was sent by email. It didn't follow the procedure, but under the circumstances, you might want to consider it. So you guys, before we open any, and I have that one unopened on, in my system, I'm going to send it over to the clerk to open last if you guys approve that. Otherwise, we'll write him back and tell him no.
How's everybody feel about that?
I would say under the situation where people may or may not go to the post office, maybe limiting, I think in this particular case, we should make an exception for that.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree with Al.
Okay, so I guess we need a motion. Is, you want to take that as a motion, Al?
So moved.
Okay, we need a second. Stan?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Let me read it.
Okay.
Motion to accept the bid from Willie Earth. Which I have in a closed email, unopened.
Is that right, Al?
And it was received before the deadline.
Yes. That's the motion, correct.
We have the motion, we have the seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So it's four to one. John opposes. All right, so now, Kim, you're on stage now.
Okay. Phil has given me this envelope. I want you to know, I did not look at it.
Did you stay six feet apart?
Two, three, four, five, six. I've got seven envelopes, so you know. The first one I'm opening is Fitzpatrick Excavating. Town of Grafton, job location, Hinkley Brook. And I'll just give, I'm not going to read all of the writing, I'm just going to give you the price, $162,000.
Do they have insurance?
This is all that's in the envelope, nothing else.
Kim, is there...
We probably... Pardon?
Is there a certificate insurance with it?
No.
Does he say anything about the insurance?
Removing and getting something of old culvert, divert water install box culvert seven foot high, Herb Jensen, 25 backfill rip rap. No.
What was that number again, Kim?
$162,000.
Who was it?
Fitzpatrick Excavating and Trucking LLC.
I think the insurance certificate's an important aspect.
Well, it's supposed to be in the bid when the bid was turned in, according to the specs. Not afterwards.
The next one is Hunter Excavating Inc. No certificate of insurance. Hinkley Brook Road, culvert number 11, proposed total $280,000.
280?
280. That's all there was, other than there was, it looks to me like this happens to be references. That's the only other letter that came with it. The next one is no name on the outside, just Hinkley Brook Culvert 11. Amadon Construction LLC.
What was that again, Kim?
Amadon, A-M-E-D-N, out of Jamaica. And it looks like references along with a certificate of insurance. Total amount $175,000.
So there is a certificate of insurance for that?
There is. And a reference. And this one is Daniels. Neil H. Daniels. Hold on. Okay, there is a certificate of insurance with this one. And their total price, $169,450. Gurney Brothers. There is a certificate of insurance. Bid of $208,600. A.S. Clark &amp; Sons. There is a certificate of insurance. Total is $176,530. Jamie Gregory Trucking. There is a certificate. $164,000.
And now, I'm going to send, that's the last one, right?
Yep, that's the envelope that came and I thought it was another.
Okay, I'll send this one over to you right now.
Okay, there is no attachment with it other than the bid itself, so there's no insurance with it.
Who is it?
It is Willie Earth Moving Corp. W-I-L-L-E-Y, Earth Moving Corp. They're out of Windsor, Vermont. And their bid price is $169,800. No insurance attached.
Danny, you have any comments so far?
Not really, other than I know the policy and I think they didn't send the insurance, they should be eliminated. And I do believe Mark Pickerin, when we did our financial plan, said that he would look over these for us before we decide, which might be a good idea too.
Okay.
But I would think because the insurance is part of it, I don't think they, I mean, you got a bunch that did, I think that would be one thing, that you shouldn't accept the ones that did not send the insurance.
I agree.
I agree.
Yeah, I do too.
So I guess, so I guess now, Danny, you, does everybody agree that Danny should talk to Mark and then we'll have this, accept the bids at the next meeting? Is that how you want to handle this?
I think so.
That's how we've done it.
Okay. All right, so we don't need a motion for that, do we, no?
And you don't want to accept any of the, any except, except for those with the COI?
Yeah, my personal feeling is if you don't have a certificate of insurance, you're not working for the town. That's just my feeling.
You look at it, follow direction.
Yep. That worries me.
Not a good indicator.
It is not.
No.
Well, I just, I don't want somebody else to come back onto the town saying, you know, I had my insurance in there, but you awarded it to someone that didn't follow what you asked for. So we see this many times and, I mean, I would think a lot of these contractors work for towns and even banks and all. That's one of the things you have to have, is your insurance ready for them, not after it's awarded or anything. Even though we're not awarding it today, if it was a requirement that it came with the bid package, then I think that's what we should follow.
I agree with Danny.
I make a motion that we only accept bids that had insurance included with them. I would prefer a different motion. I would prefer you name... Amadon, you are accept, you are going to look at and let, and consider the bids from Amadon Construction, Daniels, Gurney Brothers, A.S. Stark &amp; Sons, and Jamie Gregory. Those are the five, those are the five that do have the COI.
Did you mention Clark?
Yes. Yes, Clark, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have a second? Is Alan, you okay with that motion?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second? Yes?
I have a question. Do any of these have their insurance on file from previous work with the town?
The others?
Yeah.
No.
I think the only one, the only one that's worked for the town recently has been Jamie Gregory Trucking.
Fitzpatrick did the work, if you remember, Fitzpatrick did do the work at the Town Garage.
Almost three years ago.
But isn't...
But that was through another contractor, too. They were just a subcontractor.
Right, yeah.
But the policy still stays so that aren't you supposed to have it accompanied, so? Yeah.
And I think that's something we just ought to be firm with. If somebody doesn't send it, they're just automatically disqualified.
I agree. So do we have a second to Alan's motion?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? I agree with Stan, not with everybody else.
Who, who was the second from?
Stan.
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 Okay, all right.
Alan may consider Stan seconded.
Consider only... Consider only Amadon, Daniels, Gurney Brothers, A.S. Clark &amp; Sons, and Jamie Gregory.
Correct.
Yes.
Correct. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I excuse myself.
Yes, you did, that's right, John. Yeah, and one, one, not an extension, it's just, excuse himself from the voting, there is a conflict there, or possible conflict.
Understandable.
So Danny, then you will now take these and then you run it through the state, is that what you're going to do?
I know Mark, when we did the financial plan, said that he would look over it because it is being funded through the state, I think that we should at least let him look at it.
Right.
I'll catch up with Bill tomorrow and we try getting ahold of Mark, maybe we can just scan him and send him to him, so he can see him.
Okay, that's great.
Dan, all these folks that you're going to look at, they're going to have all the specs with it, right? Even though Kim said there wasn't anything in the bid.
Right, what they usually do is they go by the specs that we provided.
Oh, okay.
So that's what they're, they were mentioning when Kim was saying, you know, with, with the, you know, how would she word it, for what we had sent. A lot of them won't put it back in because they hadn't sent to them or they asked for, though they know what the specs are. The only thing that there might be some differences on that we may have to ask every one of them, is there's a lot of confusion on the guardrails because there's many different ways that companies do it to get it to meet requirements. And I told them all what I had thought and, you know, I want to look at that and see what, how they were going to do it.
Okay. All right. If that's, if everybody's happy with that plan, then we shall move on. Okay, wait for bits. You happy, Bill?
Yeah, that's great. Well, the way permits is, it's simply that one...
Wind River.
Wind, Wind River is the only one. I have the COI and I, and, and their fee, it's all paid.
So we need a motion now to accept this and let you sign it, is that okay?
Yeah, both, both things, to accept it and approve it and I sign it.
Somebody will make that motion?
I make a motion.
Alan?
Make a motion, we accept Wind River. And the motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right, that's done. Danny, degraded tires.
So I had Bill put it on there because I called and got prices and I was shocked how much the tires have gone up over the years for that grader. And in the past, what I've done is I bought two in one budget and then bought the other two in the following budget to split it up, but when they gave me the prices, no matter how I do it, it's just the money. To buy five tires for the grader, four rears and one front one, I have a brand new spare that I was going to use for the front, is $8,000.
Oh God. $8,000 for tires?
$8,000 for five tires.
You got to be kidding me.
$1,575 a piece for the rear. The front one's 13, I can't have exact, and then the tires in, 300 to put them all on. They're big tires, they're radio tires. This is a, the grader's what, 10 years old, something like that, and this is our second set that we'll be buying. Yeah, that's why I wanted to put on the agenda, because with all the repairs we've had with the trucks and stuff this winter, that part of the budget is gone. The only thing that we have in there that I saw for money is there's $11,000 left over from the sand budget. Even though that whole column shows a negative, it's because the grant is $21,000 that doesn't show when it comes back in.
Where'd you get the price from, Danny?
I called Pete's Tire. I priced the same exact tires that are on the grader, we've had good luck with them. And of course, the front one, I matched it to what was on it. And then I went online and looked them up and I found I can get them online for about $25 a piece cheaper, but then you have to mount them and everything still, so I didn't think that was much of a savings.
Is there, is there any way that, rather than doing the $8,000 at one time, is there any way that we can spread it, better spread it out?
What I could do is order, you know, one front one and two rear ones in the budget that we're in and then wait until the new budget starts to help break it up. I've done that in the past. So you can't put any tires on the rear unless you do all four, because they're going to be all the same size. But, I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem doing that. I would have asked for a lot more in the budget if I realized they had gone up that much.
Danny, the tires you have now, will they make it to the new budget?
It's, the reason I brought it up is right now, you're getting any, you know, if you pull a ditch and get into the wet stuff, it's like running racing slicks, but, you know, I mean, it's a lot of money, we get by.
Well, it doesn't, if you go, if you, you've got to spend the money anyway, whether it's this budget or next budget, and you don't know what the next budget's going to bring anyway. You could have more repairs the next time, so...
Yeah, I don't, it's, this winter, you know, the trucks are all over, you've been, you know, stuff that doesn't warranty don't cover and we had to put tires on them trucks, so that eats it up. So it's hard to figure what to put aside for maintenance on, on the equipment, on some of this stuff. It is for me anyways. I just wanted to bring this by you guys, because it is so much money for just tires.
I think you ought to purchase them now.
Yeah, I agree with John.
I do know that I, I called like a couple weeks ago on this and got a price and I don't know, I would have thought the price would have stayed the same, but they went up a little bit within a couple weeks. So in a couple months, I don't know with everything that's going on, if the price is going to go again or not.
I think I'd order them right now, but while you have a price, who knows what's going to happen when this fire is over? There'll probably be a lot of purchasing, there may be some shortages.
Yeah.
What about the old tires? Is there a cost to get rid of the old tires?
So the old tires, most of the time, they charge you to take rid of them, to take care of them, but then you take a contractor with a loader or something like that, those tires could be run a little bit longer. The reason we didn't worry about them tires all winter long is when they're bald like that, the chains actually work better on them because it makes them more aggressive. But, yeah, I'm not going to pay the dispose of them tires, because someone with a loader probably would pay a little something for them, not a lot, but at least it, you know, maybe you might get $100 a piece for them.
Well, that's 800, that's $600, that's not bad.
Well, I'm only buying five.
Five.
Maybe 500 and they probably wouldn't take the odd ball tire. But still, I think that we could get something for them. Some places actually recap them. I won't buy recaps. If John, if I will remember, we bought recaps for the last grader once and we ended up taking them off and taking them back because they were out around.
Right.
A company might be, might be buy them off us, you know, maybe Pete's will give us something for them, maybe they have contacts, but I, I just think that they're worth a little something.
I do, I do too, and that's why I questioned. I didn't know if, if the tire barn had something along with that price quote.
Right. I'll check into that more, I'll go on the computer and even Google, I mean, you can go on it and Google stuff and gives you a good idea. Then doing a lot of that with parts lately, just because it's easier to look up online and find stuff out.
Is there any, sorry, is there any chance the capital budget can help out with something this large?
I don't think so, because it's not, it's a maintenance item.
Right.
We can, I mean, we can ask them. I mean, usually in the past, end of the year, our budget, I always, we fall pretty good. I know this winter, there's a lot of expense, so I never, I don't want to guarantee that. I mean, if, Kim, if you want, we can go over it. That's why I had you send me a new one today after this expenditure.
Yeah, I did see the $21,000 that you're talking about, I already highlighted that.
Yeah.
But that's about the only line item you are in the negative four.
Right, yeah. And then if you look like the gravel, one is over and one's under, so I can, I consider both of them being gone.
I just was wondering, capital budget, because I know replacement costs for computers and things like that, I know that they cover it, I didn't know if replacement costs of this magnitude for tires was any of those, anything that's considered?
They, they never have in the past.
I'm on that, I'm on that, and I, I wouldn't recommend that they do it.
Okay.
I think what, I think the board, when they do the budgets years to come, should, if, what is it, about every, how many years, Danny, you think, the tires have to be replaced every five years?
Yeah, probably about that on, on the grader. Yeah, probably about that on, on the grader, um. I think that, I think a lot of the maintenance on the trucks, we're gonna have to look at again, just because we're starting to get some that are out of warranty and the just expense, this winter is gonna show good examples of a lot of the stuff, so I think it, you know, we're gonna have to look at that really close next budget round.
Yeah, well, I, I think that, I think we should just put that in a little tickle file somewhere and then two or three years down the when, when we get to that point, maybe you just have to up that maintenance budget a little bit for the tires.
Yep, yep, I think that's one thing I've even learned with the ten wheelers, you know, you've got a whole nother axle and even the front tires are more expensive, so that I think it's gonna be on all the maintenance, so the equipment's gonna have to go up at some point.
Well, the capital budget should really look at whether or not seven years is too long, and that, that's something maybe they can do this, this coming year.
Yep.
So do we need a motion for this, I guess it's over eight thousand, it's over, it's over five thousand, so.
John already made a motion and I seconded it.
Oh, he did?
Well, he said, he said he was in favor of purchasing them now and I agreed with him.
I didn't hear a formal motion, but it's okay.
I'll second it.
Alrighty, good, so all in favor of spending the eight thousand dollar whatever plus to, for the, for the, what is it, five tires for the grader, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, Kathy, I accidentally turned your mic off, can you turn it on?
Is Kathy okay now?
Yep.
No, yeah, she is now, okay.
Okay, so you, you okay with that, Kathy?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, anything else on the highways?
Nope, we've been just doing a lot of grading, um, you're gonna, you probably noticed firsthand that it rained right after we did Middletown and it kinda, um, made a mess up there. Um, there's no traffic on the roads to pack them down, so even four days after you do it, if it rains, you're gonna get some mud on them. We'll try stone rake them out afterwards to, uh, make them better again.
Yeah, I, I noticed that, Danny, because when you did Middletown, normally within a day or two, the road is kinda, and after a couple of days, it looked like it still graded it, but there's very little people driving their cars around.
Yeah, and then I had David go up with the stone rake there after we got the rain and we just put the new teeth on the rake, because they were all, they just wore out. I think it's the first time I've ever done, done, uh, seventeen years on that rake. And, uh, the electric motor on it that picks it up and down burnt up, so we've been, we've been waiting for parts, because the only place I could buy them was online, so we're just, it's a little bit different when you don't have the traffic to pack your roads down now.
Yeah, amazing.
Makes it nice to work in there.
So if, if we're all done with the highway, let's move on to, um, the clerk treasurer's report.
No, no, you have one more item.
Town Highway thirteen.
Under Highway.
Taylor, the Taylor Bridge.
Is there another gen- I guess, I guess I don't have the latest of the latest then.
Town Highway thirteen and the Taylor Bridge, E nine one one issues.
Okay, so.
Town, Town Highway thirteen, uh, Gary, uh, Gary Clark, that's the, the, uh, road and, and legal trail that goes up from the old schoolhouse in Haughtonville up to Gary Clark, towards Gary Clark's property. His driveway comes off that, uh, he got an E nine one one address, uh, but, uh, Tyler Hermanson was, uh, asked if we were gonna name the road. He, uh, and, so I talked to Gary and see if he had a name or anything he wanted. He would prefer the sign, just say Town Highway, um, thirteen, which is the, which is what it is, and not give a name.
What was, was there an old name for this road from years ago?
No.
What's the class of the road, though?
It's, uh, class four and then a legal trail combination.
And just one house on it?
Well, there's like five properties on it, but his is the only one that, that needs an address, he's the only one with a cabin.
Where, where did you say that, was off of?
It's, it's by the schoolhouse, that, the, the legal trail that goes off from the schoolhouse in Haughtonville.
It's just past Bob Crawford's.
Yes, the last house, Stan, when you go up to Wyndham, is the last one in Haughtonville, on the right.
Right-hand side?
Yep.
The old schoolhouse.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
And there's a road, if you look, if you go by it, there's a road and a bridge across it. Lee Wilson used to hold that up.
We call it Town Highway thirteen, put the sign out.
Okay, do we second to that?
Yes, second it.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, say, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
The other issue is this is okay for right now, but, uh, on one twenty-one where Dr. Draven lives and the other house where Taylor Bridge is, Taylor Bridge is actually, is a town road. Those two houses coming off a town road should have a, have a town road address, not one twenty-one. They are not by E nine one one standards on one twenty-one. The question is, uh, at some point in time, we've got to, got to do this, question is, you want me to ask them now if they want to, uh, have Taylor Bridge, uh, I'm, have us use the Taylor Bridge, or do they want to name Taylor Bridge something else and make that their address? Uh, or does the town want to give them Taylor Bridge and all the, everything that goes along with that, including if it blows out again, they repair it?
Yes.
Um, and, uh, and leave their addresses on one twenty-one.
But would they take the bridge?
Who knows, I don't know, the problem is the one, the house is for sale right now, the one out.
Aren't they both for sale?
Could be.
Jerry Draven has his house for sale, I don't know if it still is.
Dravens and Murphys both, I think, are for sale.
Yeah, well, Dravens have been for sale for years.
For a long time, yeah, and Murphy's has been in the last six months, I think, is on the market, Nancy and Hardy would know that for sure. And they're muted.
Well, can we put this on the agenda for next time, do we have to deal with this now?
I just.
No, I just wanna know what, I, I need, we don't know, we do not have to, we can deal with it anytime you want. And, and in the meantime, what do you want me to do, though, that's the question, anything?
I just unmuted, uh, excuse me, I just unmuted long enough to let you know that, yes, they're both on the market.
Well, I mean, personally, the, the names, that's been there for, forever, I mean, why don't we just leave it there until it's quite a date?
That's too bad to have, make, have to change their address.
I don't want them to have to change their address, but you're right. I can just tell Tyler, we're gonna leave it alone, he, he isn't, he is not excited about this one.
And could we say something like, we will use the address as it is, uh, and change, and, and, you know, when the sale takes place, we will change it to Taylor Bridge, so the new people then will, when there's a sale, the new people, their address will reflect Taylor Bridge.
Al, you're talking about two places, not one.
Two.
I, I understand that, so it's gonna have to be Taylor Bridge one and Taylor Bridge two or whatever, they'll have to figure that out.
No, what, what he's saying is you gotta change both addresses at the same time, and, and and that, between these, unfortunately, between these residents, that will never happen. And secondly, you're gonna be dealing with two different owners no matter what, so.
I think we should leave it alone for now.
Yeah, I, I agree with John, just leave it alone, as long as it's in, in the pursuit, okay?
Yep.
Okay, so.
I have a question, I have a question. So, how does it come up for emergency services when you put their address in? Does it show?
Yeah.
It'll come up as one twenty-one.
There, there's like six thirty-six and six thirty-eight, uh, one twenty-one, something like that, I can look it up, go to the right.
Yeah.
And, and neither Rich nor Keith have a problem with it, correct, Rich?
No, it's no problem, we've been out there numerous times before, it does come up just one twenty-one address, so.
Okay, but.
Pretty obvious.
So the only issue is just making it correct on paper, it's not, it's not a, um, a safety issue or a, a real problem for a response as it is currently.
No, those, those are, I will bring up later, but that's Anderson Road has to be completely readdressed, it's wrong. That's the only, that, there seems to be, there's another place, there might be another road too, over on that side, because they were addressed according to Rockingham's, uh, sket- uh, desires and not ours, and so they're wrong. And they need to be readdressed because they are not correct at all.
Well, is that something, Bill, we can wait till this virus thing is over and whatever?
Yeah, uh, Tyler Hermanson from E nine one one said we could do that this summer.
Okay, alright. Okay, so is that on the highway now, because I guess I have an agenda that didn't have it on there, so is the clerk and treasurer now, next?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so Kim, you're on.
Um, did everybody get a copy of the proposal from Sullivan and Powers?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so Bill just wanted me to touch base a little bit on this, and, uh, last year, um, rather than going through the bid process, because they're, um, an entity that's, um, primarily a main focus and we've had a long time connection with them, that we wanna go with them without going through the RFP and getting bid processes and all. So just, um, wanted to know their, their dollar amounts coming in the same as it has in the past, just under fifteen, we're at fourteen-six for a price on it, and do we wanna move forward and, um, accept Sullivan Powers' proposal? And then start on the audit, believe it or not, already, um, and they were really quick last year, so we got in, under the gun and we were done soon, so. Any thoughts about going with anybody else?
I move, we accept theirs.
I'll, I'll.
Yeah, guys, Alan seconded, John made a motion. Any other discussion on, on the, um, or, or orders or whether?
I just, I'd just like to co- comment really quick, uh, this has been the case since a, uh, select board meeting in two thousand and seventeen. Every year since two thousand and seventeen at least, it was agreed that Sullivan Powers has the expertise, they, you don't have to re-educate them, and in your current, well, it's about to be approved policy, and your current policy, this is allowed as a professional, so I, I just, the motion is in line with our policies, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, say, any, we have a motion on the field, on the floor, so say aye if you agree?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, alright, Kim, you got something else too you wanna talk about?
Yep, I do, um, I also wanna talk about, and this will involve Rich this morning, I need to let you know that I did have a report of a dog bite. Um, they have been taken care of at the hospital and then the doctor is required to fax me a copy of the, of, um, the incident, and then I am to report it to the health officer, which I have, and, um, I sent it to Rich and Rich, maybe you can chime in and let me know if you had any, um, if you were able to work on this at all today.
I haven't yet, uh, I just barely got through the email that I had to go through, but I certainly will look at it by the end of the day.
Okay, uh, just so, um, the board knows, it, the dogs were covered under the rabies, they had not expired. Um, the license had not been renewed yet, we did extend the renewal date for licensing, so that's not an issue. And then, um, Rich will report back to us once he makes the contacts, make sure everybody's okay, and then we just file the paperwork as long as there's no issues otherwise, so letting you know about that. Um, go ahead.
Kim.
Yeah.
So I think there's two issues there, there's one issue, the health part of it, but shouldn't our, um, oh, um, Mike Wayswell know about it too?
Yeah, um, I haven't let him know, he should've been reported first, I don't know, I guess I can report it, I don't know if it was Rich or my responsibility, but I'll give, um, Mike a call and just let him know.
He certainly needs to be in the loop as a constable correctly, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'll let Rich know, I mean, um, Mike know.
Let me look in the deck, Kim, before you do too much, let me read the manual on a health officer, and if it's my deal, I certainly will do. Get something off your plate anyhow.
Okay, then I'll be in the office tomorrow morning too, so if you wanna let me know what you want me to do, and then I'll just do whatever, okay?
But, but still, Mike Wayswell has a responsibility, I think.
But it might, whether it comes from Rich or if it comes from me, so that's where Rich is coming from, I believe.
Yes.
But as long as he gets notified.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Did you get the first call on this, Kim?
It came by fax on, over the weekend, so it was left on my desk this morning when Michelle came in on Sunday. And that's typically what happens, is they just fax me the information, that where it was bit was on the finger, you know, that type of thing.
Who did it come from, from a?
The dogs, the dogs were actually, um, Bob Hazeltime's daughter, Ann, that lives with him, and she's got two dogs. And it was in Ellsworth, so they're, they're all friendly, because obviously Bob Hazeltime lives on, and care takes the Ellsworth, so I don't think there was any, you know, problem there, but it was just a reported bite on the finger. And, um, that, and that leads me to, um, because it wasn't filled out on the form, whether what the rabies dates and the rabies numbers was, I needed to research and make sure I had their certificate here and put the rabies numbers on, and then I sent that to Rich. And then there's a spot on there for Rich's comments, if he has any.
And this is the first time an incident, so I'm a health officer, this what, couple of months or whatever, this is the first time this happened, so I gotta do a little bit of research to see exactly how I'm supposed to handle it, I honestly don't know right off the top of my head.
Okay, Kim, do you have something else too about hours, I think?
Yes, um, I just wanted to run by everybody, our muni net, muni net here that, um, us clerks all talk to, um, back and forth, um, has been flying up the wall about whether or not we still wanna keep our doors open, even though, um, the governor says, and open up, and it is our discretion, um, they understand it, and it is, um, worded as we may resume operations, so that may word is like, you know, pretty flexible. Um, um, a lot of our, and, and I can tell, I can start out by saying, there's issues that I have for opening the office, um, which I can, I know, make my office hours what I'd like them to be, but my office hours can sometimes tie into bills and, um, Bill and I feel about the same, I've talked to him, he told me how he felt even before I told him me. Um, for one thing, opening up the office for public use, um, we've got bathrooms that would need to be maintained, because obviously they would be usable for the public if we were to open up the public. We have no one to clean the bathrooms other than ourselves. So that's kind of like, you know, does make me happy, um, my vault is a very small confined area, I know we need six feet apart, um, can just about get six feet in there of separation, but you're in a very small closed-in area, that doesn't make me feel comfortable for having it. Um, they'll have to bring their own masks, um, when they talk about, um, the files and the notes and the land records, um, a lot of these, um, all of my card index are actual card files, which means they would be touching them, I have notebooks and I have land records, and you can't go in and clean the land records. I'm not online, so it's not like they're on a computer and they're printing them off. Um, they've been talking about having issues, you know, how do we clean, how do we disinfect after? Even if they bring in gloves, how do we know the gloves are, um, haven't ever been used before? How do we know, somebody's made a comment about they're walking in with shoes and what spit did they step into, you know? So, a lot of the clerks are having this issue about reopening. Some of the clerks are looking at opening, um, by appointment only and being very strict, no bathroom use, can we do that? Um, you know, one person at a time in the office, um, so, um, eh, my concern is, and I feel I would like to leave it as is until the eighteenth of March, when it's time to open up and the band is lifted, and then, um, decide whether or not I'd like to do one person at a time by appointment only, but for now, I'd still like to leave the office totally closed. Um, I, I haven't had a problem with dealing with anybody, everybody's been emailing me, it's been going very smoothly. I'm getting tax bills to tax preparers like they'd like it, I'm getting lister cards sent off, I, I haven't had any issues, I, I can't speak for the listers how they've been, but I've been able to keep up, I'm not, um, a high traffic, we're not a high traffic area for researchers pounding down the door like Burlington areas. down the door like Burlington areas, that has, you know, anywhere from twenty to thirty within any given day, um, for real estate. So I'm happy the way things have been going, and I really feel comfortable, I want to leave my doors locked, and I'd be here like I have been. And, um, I think Bill feels the same.
Can I? Here, Kim?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Um, and for the lister's part, we're trying to spend as little time in the office already as possible because, uh, we're so close to Kim's office. We can access everything temporarily. I don't know who, if we want to do this forever, but temporarily, we're accessing all our programs, um, and our computer at home, uh, with the new computer that we got. And, um, the old Ann is going to be in there, for instance, on Wednesday, but we're kind of working it out with Kim, when she's not going to be there, and when's a good time for us to be there. Um, and it would get more complicated, you open the office, Kim, then it would be more complicated for us. There's some things we have to do to access the records in the vault, and it would be more complicated if there were anybody else in there, I think, for us to try to fit our job in, and we're supposed to stay on our normal schedule of, um, when we have to have things done. So that's just our two cents. Hardy, I don't know if you have anything to add? Who's in another room? But anyway.
And Bill, how do you feel?
No, I think that's fine. For all those reasons, I think it's good.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I, I think, I don't, you know, I think you people working in there, and I think to be on the safe side is probably better.
Yeah, I think you gotta feel you're comfortable with changing your current, uh, such, and then once you feel comfortable, then you work into it however you feel.
Okay.
I support your, I support your feelings, Kim, but in reality, it's not a fair call, right? You're, you're an elected official, really, really, your office, it's, we can make suggestions, but it's your call.
Right, but I, I still, because I work closely with the board and have, you know, a really good relationship with them, I'd just like to be open and, and take in your opinions and considerations too. And where Bill and I share the same building, are we considered the two coworkers in the office, or are we not? I mean, we are in the same building, in the same office, but separated. So what would you call two workers, when they say two coworkers?
Well, there's one town clerk and one town administrator.
So there's our two people per building, and it says building.
It's two separate offices, however.
But it's the same building. Yeah.
I think, I think basically, Kim, what, what you're thinking of, um, and I, if I was in your situation, would be your health and your family's health.
Right. Yeah. So, so that's kind of where I'm gonna leave it, we're still closed.
Me.
All right. Is everybody's okay with that?
Yep.
We don't need to do any motion or anything, that's?
No. And I think that's all I have.
You can address this again when May comes around, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you said March, but you meant May.
Hey, huh?
May.
When she was talking, when Kim was talking, she said March, but she.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eighteenth of May.
Eighteenth of May.
Thank you, you're right. Okay, so we have anything on the coronavirus that we need to talk about?
Not really. I just want to let you know that the emergency management committee continues to meet every day. It's, a few times, we have nothing to say, and, uh, but it's a good sharing of, uh, information between, uh, the fire, the rescue, uh, the people that are, are, um, are shut in, basically the shut-ins, residents, those that need to be looked after as far as, uh, care goes, and make sure that they have what they need, uh, in, working with the church. And so with all the people that are at that meeting, there's about seven of us, and the school, with all that, um, we're able to make sure, as far as, uh, you guys are concerned and the town is concerned, that people are being looked after, if they need help, it's out there, so that's all.
Kathy, do you have anything, you know, being on a fast squad or whatever?
No, just, the less calls we get, the better.
And, and Stan and Al are there too, so, and, and John, but Stan is working with the church, and that's working really well.
You're still doing your men's group, Stan?
We haven't met, uh, as, as a group, but, uh, the group is, uh, doing all their phone calling, uh, to the at-risk list. Uh, we're on our, we're due to do round, uh, just this weekend, I mean. We're not meeting, we're being.
Okay, so if there's nothing else, uh, we'll move on to the, um, Wi-Fi, VTEL, I think you all got Bill's messages on that one, and some of you responded.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I think that, after I talk to everybody, I think the best, uh, offer we have is from the Wind, uh, Wyndham Foundation, from the tavern, the inn, and they're willing, uh, um, Angela says that they have excess space in their plugins, both the phone line and, uh, outlets to put power to it, and, uh, they could set it up there and it could be easily accessed from that, the parking lot behind the inn. They're closed, it's empty, and it might be a really good place. The other places suggested would, some of them would necessitate running a, both of pop, well, not so much power, but, uh, definitely a telephone line. And this is basically, we're all set to go, if, so if, if you guys are okay with the inn hosting that, and we don't have to keep it once this over, we can give it back to, um, the telephone company, but, uh, well, or I, maybe we can keep it, but we, you know, and the inn can decide whether they want to keep it, so, uh, but I would like to go get back to Sean Paul Geet and, uh, let him know, uh, what we want to do, but I wanted to get your permission to, uh, handle it that way.
Bill.
Yeah.
Um, did you see Eric Stevens', uh, email relative to the old fire station?
Yep. How would you hook it up?
Well, that's what I, I figured that's what you were referring to, that, that you had talked about, uh, installation there, and that, that made it a lesser quality offer.
Yeah, the other thing is, the other thing is, the library is right across the street, the people already hook up there.
Right. And I also think the church parking lot, you can get on their, their system right in the church parking lot, the white church.
Can you easily plug in?
Plug in?
Oh, he's saying it's already available, not, not for, not for VTEL to put a new one in, existing.
Yeah, oh, you could just go in the parking lot and go on their system.
But you have to have the password, don't you?
But you do have to have a password.
How, how would anybody know what the password is?
Password, I guess.
The tavern is unsecured, so it, there's, it's not password protected, does that search?
Right, if you're looking for unsecure, then, right.
Well, and the other, the other thing with the tavern, it would just be access to the world, not to their computer.
Right.
So for instance, with ours, if somebody got on ours, and that's why we don't let anybody get on ours, is because, uh, they could get in, they'd get in our system. Whereas, whereas, I, I asked Angela that specifically, and she says, no, it's just a, it just access to the internet, not to anything.
No password. It's just an open, open system.
It would be, it, it would be open, yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything out at the Crafton Ponds?
It wouldn't serve as easily out there. And nothing's going on. I have, we, they, they talked about that before, but I don't know how well that would serve. I mean, we're not looking at hundreds of people using it anyway.
But I guess the real question is, do you want to even do it? That, that's the question.
Yep, I think that's the first question.
Well, it seems to me, if VTEL's willing to do it, and if the Wyndham Foundation's willing to accept it, let the two of them talk. Let the two of them talk, it's not, we don't have to be involved.
Yeah, I, I agree with Alan.
Yeah, we've already got the library and, and the tavern now, so I don't know how many more you need.
Is the library, is the library, that's, is that password protected though, or is that something you can just? Oh, the library is not password protected.
Right.
I just heard that.
But I, I've seen one or two people down there pretty steady.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
But the, one of them got, got his own, so he doesn't use it anymore.
But it is not password protected, so that's.
So what's, do we, do we, do we want to have a motion? I mean, we need to make a decision, yes or no?
Well, if, as long as, if, if, as long as everybody agrees that if, if VTEL wants to do it and the tavern wants to cooperate, that that's fine, then, I don't need a motion.
Good, okay.
I agree.
Does everybody agree with that?
But you're gonna follow, who's gonna follow through with VTEL and, and the tavern?
I will.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, huh? Let's deal with the school. Everything that's on there, so that, I'm not sure that everybody knows this about, I learned about Sunday, is that there were. What's that?
Somebody needs to move their mic.
Excuse me, Bill, Joe?
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Okay.
I only learned about this an hour ago. I really don't need to suffer through this whole meeting, so either you put me on or call me when you want me.
Okay, why don't we do that next, Joe?
Okay, let's do the fire, let's do the fire warden now. Alan?
Okay. So the discussion on the fire warden came up this morning in our meeting, conversation that takes place. There was some question about closing down open burning, and how people were interpreting that. It was my understanding, the state's policy is to close down open burning, it's not a fire danger thing, it is a coronavirus issue in state, we have the fire wardens, the public, and possibly firefighters responding.
That could be.
If you read their ruling, it's, it's not clear, because no open burning. It could easily be interpreted that meant all burning, but the state law, only, the fire wardens are only, um, privileged with, uh, jurisdiction over permitted burns. So the intent is to affect permitted burns, does not affect somebody's fire, warming fire, cooking fire. Now, you can share, you can share with people, the intent is to reduce, and, and they may choose to fault that, but we cannot tell them, that they cannot burn their camp. We don't have jurisdiction.
Let me comment, please. Um, Bill informs me that I have no jurisdiction over campfires, small fire rings, that kind of thing. It is my recommendation that nobody starts outdoors in any way, shape, or matter, and it's got very little to do with coronavirus. This is about a small town whose firefighters and whose rescue squad are one and the same people. That's what it's about. I don't want to risk having a rescue squad on a fire line somewhere when they're needed by people who are affected by the virus. So that's my, that's why I'm saying this. And right now, in the spring, excuse me, wait, so I'm done? Right now in the spring, there's, um, highest, the highest probability of a, of a fire spreading as, as than any other time of year.
No.
This is the very worst. It's, everything is dry, the surface, the sun and the wind dries the surface out instantly, practically instantly, and it is very volatile. So if anybody is burning outdoors, a spark gets away from them, like what happened to, to, um, up on Wyman Hill, uh, then it's a big problem, and all the people fighting that fire are not available for the rescue squad anymore. So that was, so it's my recommendation, in that I have no authority over small fires. My recommendation is to not allow any fires outdoors right now, this spring. Go ahead. Do you not agree with that?
You can make that recommendation, but, but I talked with Lars Lunt, the fire chief for the San Diego monastery, he, he said the same as I remember the laws being, it, as far as what the governor put out, it refers to permit burns. You can make the recommend, you can make the recommendation, people don't.
Al, just, I'm just. Right. I understand I have no authority over them, but I'm recommending to the town, starting with the select board, to not allow any open burning at all. If you can't do that, I will continue to tell people they can't do any own, open burning at all, because I think it's a big danger.
See, I don't, I don't agree with that. I think that people who have fire rings and the kids are at home and they want to have s'mores or marshmallows, or they want to sit around and have a little fire on that chilly day, you're, you're taking away enough of the freedom that they've already lost already, and, and I, I agree with you, can't have a burning of brush and, and whatever, but a fire ring, when most, I, I imagine there must be sixty, forty, fifty people have fire rings in this town, why can't you do that?
If I went and inspected each fire ring and made sure there was bare ground, I would say like twelve feet around, all the way around, yeah, that'd be fine, but I don't have time to do that, and I don't think you do either. Um, a spark can jump out, that's all that, that's all that, um, um, name had up on Wyman Hill. He was just burning a few sticks in the barrel, which is totally legal, but he turned his back for a minute, and a spark jumped out, and he lost three acres. And so that's a really, what can happen. It's a very volatile time of year, been in service for fifty years, over fifty years. You know what I'm talking about? I'm sure Al would agree. It's a very, very volatile time of year. So I'm not willing, personally, I'm not willing to take a chance, you know? My grandson came with his kids, and they wanted to burn, and I said, no, not even a fire ring, nothing outdoors. It's too dangerous right now. In the summer, when everything greens up, sure, that'll be fine, but right now, my recommendation is no burning of any stuff outdoors, because we need those firefighters to help people, they need help.
Well, I was out, I was out at the Wyman Hill fire, and I, I gotta admit, I, I do agree with Bill, I think it's a temporary situation, and if there's anything that can be done, we'll eliminate, uh, another hazard, I certainly see there's nothing wrong with it.
After greenup, it should be fine.
How you gonna?
Follow it or not, it's up to you, but it's only a recommendation, I guess. But anyways, I'm not giving out any burnt permits for open burning, and I don't recommend, we have any open burning at all.
Can I go now?
Well, how do you feel, Kathy, and how do you feel, uh, Doc?
I can't agree with Bill and, and Stan. It's temporary after greenup. With the fire danger being lower, that would suffice for me. With the fire danger being lower, that would suffice for me.
So you guys want to pass a local ordinance for the time being, denying people the right to be, burn in their fire rings? That's what you're saying?
Any burning.
An ordinance, because there's no way to enforce it, otherwise, there's no way to enforce that. Because the law says, by definition, a fire ring, a outdoor, um, oven, all those things are permitted. It does say they have, they cannot be near a forest, they cannot be, be, uh, they have to be distant from a whole bunch of stuff. Read the reg, I, I said it to you, okay? And if people are doing that, you have no right to tell them not to, by law. So I don't know what, I don't know what you're gonna enforce. We can put a thing, recommendation from the select board not to do that, and that's fine if you want to do that. But doesn't mean that they could, they, they have to follow it, it's merely a recommendation. So whatever you guys want to do.
Well, that's what Bill was saying from the start, it's a recommendation, and I go along with the recommendation. I mean, if somebody's just gonna go out and start to burn anyway, uh, they're, you know, it's, it's, it's their deal, I guess, but, uh.
They can't just go out and burn, you gotta get a permit for that, but they can put a, a, they can burn in their fire pit.
Well, if you just leave it as a.
How big is the fire pit? If the fire pit is any bigger, to me, if the fire pit is any bigger than a truck tire, then it's, needs a permit. That's the, that's the thought, that's the rule of thumb I use.
That's not what the law says.
Well, I don't care, I really don't care what the law says. As a warden, I'm autonomous, so that's, that's the measure I use. If it's bigger than a, I mean, you can make a, you can make a fire pit ten yards wide.
That's not a fire pit. Ten yard, that's not a fire pit, that's a, that's a brush pile. I mean, a fire pit generally is a, an area like I have, it's roughly three feet in diameter with stones all the way around it in the middle of my lawn. And you put, you put marshmallows and whatever.
I would say clearly, something three feet in diameter is not under my jurisdiction.
Well, if you, if you, if you leave it as a recommendation, then, then if the piece, if people want to have their fire pit, it's not prohibited. And then they can do what they want to do with it, that'd be my feeling.
Yeah, that, that's fine, I just think you make a recommendation that there's no, no outside burning, and if they just want to do it, they have proper, uh, clearances or clothes out there or whatever.
Or you could, you know, you could say with a properly, where a properly constructed or constructed fire pit is permitted, or something of that nature.
Yes.
Yes, safe sparks can't get into the woods, that's good.
Well, if you have a fire pit in the middle of the wood, that's true, but if you have a fire pit in your back lawn and there's no woods around, how's it gonna get in there?
You're, you guys are agreeing.
In the woods.
Okay.
Sit down.
So do you want to keep it as a recommendation? I think that's probably the simplest and best, because nobody wants to stay any.
I think that's all I'm allowed to do.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Okay, Bill, thank you, you can stay on if you'd like.
Well, the only problem with this now kind of falls on me and my guys, what's safe and what's not safe, which is fine, we'll take that determination.
Well, it's defined in the law. What I can do with your recommendation is put your recommendation up there and describe, and use, using the state law, describe what is allowed. And then say, you know, don't use it in high wind, and so, stuff like that.
Okay? You okay, can we move on?
Yep.
Okay. All right, let's go back to the school. Uh, I learned over the weekend, on Sunday.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank, thank you, Bill. I learned on Sunday that the school board has voted that we're losing our principal. And our principal is either gonna be moving to Westminster, or is gonna be back and forth, uh, to Grafton, or it, or the principal is gonna appoint a deputy to, um, to be the deputy principal at Grafton. That's, I think that's outrageous, I'm appalled by it. And I'd like to know if they're gonna pull the, our, um, principal, full-time principal, uh, what are they gonna do for our budget? Uh, that's just my feeling, and I know we have no jurisdiction, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the board.
Joe, was that a recommendation from the superintendent, supervisor union, or this new board?
I think it's the new board, but I'm not sure, I only heard it Sunday.
Can I say something? This is Wendy Martin, I watched that meeting, they are just as upset about this as everyone else is, the board is. They didn't vote to do this at all.
So what, what, what do we do? We have no choice?
How did it come about?
I watched the meeting as well, and I, I interpreted it the same way, Wendy.
It's a, that's a decision.
A superintendent's, uh, recommendation or something.
That's right, that's right.
It's a recommendation, or is it a fait accompli?
Well, it sounded like it was a fait accompli. It sure sounded that way.
Well, that's what I was.
But the board did not vote for it, Joe, the board did not vote for it, that's what you said. It's not that they're for this, they, they're, they probably have no say in this, it's the superintendent.
Wendy, at, Wendy, at last Thursday's meeting in the morning, um, she, she came out and said that that's what she was gonna do.
Yeah.
Right, right, but the board didn't vote wholeheartedly like they wanted to do this. I, I just wanted to clear that part up, that's all.
So this Suzanne, if, if the board didn't vote to do this, who has the authority to make that decision?
Administration of the Wyndham Northeast School District, which is the superintendent.
Yep.
Okay, so why can't we ask the superintendent and Jack Brier why they made this decision and can they reverse it?
Well, Jack Brier didn't have anything to do with the decision, I don't believe, it's the superintendent's, part of his job is.
To put the people where he thinks they belong.
Right. Is that what you thought too, Wendy? And Suzanne, I think you were there too.
That was my, that was my understanding, that's my understanding.
Yeah, my, ours too.
But you know, um, more and more, we are losing local control of our schools, and that's a real, uh, right of ours, I think, as Vermonters. And we are slowly but surely letting that erode. And if we let decisions like this go uncontested, it will keep eroding. The people in the administration and on the school board need to know that the citizens of Grafton oppose this kind of fiat with our school.
I, I agree a hundred percent with Suzanne, but I would also understand, if they're gonna take our principal away, then do we get a, do we get a reduction to our budget?
I don't know about that, Joe, but I'd rather have our principal.
Well, so would I. But, but the point is, if they take it away, and whatever her salary is thirty, forty thousand a year, fifty, whatever she's being paid, uh, that should be deducted from our budget, if we don't have a principal anymore.
I, I don't see how with the consolidated budget, that budget would be a factor. I think what's much more important is that, that, you know, this would be the first step in possibly several steps that just start taking resources away from our elementary school. That's what I think we have to be very careful about.
I agree, I, I, I don't know, I don't know how the select board feels about it, but I'm personally gonna write a letter to the Grafton News. I'm appalled. Now, maybe if the select board would, would want to do the same thing, that's fine, but I, personally, I think it, I think it's, I think it's horrendous, personally.
But Joe, would you, would you think about calling the superintendent of the school? Laugh at it, yes.
Excuse me, can I interrupt? Um, uh, what about inviting the superintendent to a select board meeting?
That's fine with me, I think that's great.
I think that's a great idea, Nancy.
Yeah, because I could, I can tell you the select, the superintendent doesn't read the Grafton News.
No, but, no, but Wendy.
And I understand lots of people don't actually, so that's fine.
But Wendy, that's a way to let the other residents or the, know what is going on.
Oh, I think a lot of people know, Joe, there's a, there's a group meeting tonight on Zoom to talk about it, parents, parents all are up in arms about this.
Yep.
Well, so the best, the best thing we can do is, at our next select board meeting, which is, um, May fourth, why don't we bring the superintendent in, along with Brier?
I think that's a great idea.
I think that's a great idea.
And I would, and if I were you, I'd go on record as saying you want to hear from the superintendent and not Jack Brier.
Amen to that.
Okay.
Because it's, it's, it's Chris Pratt's decision, not Jack Brier's.
Exactly, exactly right.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yep.
I agree, I make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, closed? Great, I think that's a great idea, let's, let's see what he has to say, let's, and then maybe we can get, unfortunately, we, we have to meet this stupid way, but if we could, we would be great to have, have it in an open area and have all the parents come as well, but I don't know how you're gonna do that.
Well, they know how to meet this way, so they, they can meet this way if they want to.
Well, good, I agree.
They, they do.
Okay, all righty, well, thank you, Wendy.
Also, the, the other thing is, with Fact TV recording this, after the meeting, people that missed it will be able to, you know, somebody recommends, go look at that video, go look at what was said, go do this, and so people can follow up on it, which may be helpful to create, um, a little stronger stance.
And let me, let me also, let me also say, Al, that the reason I was at that meeting on whatever night that was, Nancy was already there, because she's on the advisory committee. But Michelle Dolla posted on Facebook that there was something going on at the meeting and that people should tune in, and that's when people started tuning in, so, hey, it went viral.
I don't use Facebook, so I don't know that.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you guys could do the same thing, is what I'm saying, you know?
Perfect.
Correct, 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 it can gain momentum, exactly.
Okay, all right. The reason the cemetery is on is apparently, I guess, we never appointed, um, Don Lawrence. And he stopped me today coming out of the post office, six feet apart, and, um, he was, he asked me, well, what, what's gonna happen, um, um, who's gonna be in charge? And I said, well, you're in charge, and he, he said, well, I don't know. And then we got into the mapping, and he says, you know, I have all these records, and we should have, somebody needs to have copies of the records, and I talked to Kim about it. And Kim says she has some of the records of the maps, but we don't know about the records. And, um, so we're kind of in limbo, so I think, I know Stan and I are working on certain things with the cemetery, but I don't know where we stand here with the cemetery.
So I think at some, I think at some point, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to form, I know we're the commissioners, but that, that has not happened for years and years, uh, if in fact that's ever happened. I just think that we're gonna have to take the bull by the horns and, and create a cemetery commission, like most other towns have. Uh, you know, these are every three months or whatever, we have a, a track of.
But, but right, right now, as I understand it from Don, if somebody were to be buried tomorrow, they call him, and then he makes all the arrangements. If Don were in a hospital, who are they gonna call?
Well, I think Kim's been taking a hold of the paper.
Well, I think what he has is, he has Walter lined up, um, to cover him. And, um, Don and I had talked in the past that when he decides to phase out of this, and if you don't have someone, you can, you've got Walter. And Walter will do all of the legwork. The only thing Walter doesn't want to do is the paperwork, which is what I usually do, and that would be fill out the application, which is a very small piece of paper for a law, and then I type it up like I normally do. I don't type it up until I get the funds, so once I get the funds, I type, you guys sign, it gets recorded. So the only big part would been Walter showing the sites, offering what's available. He said he was willing to do that. Um, so you can take it from there as to who you want to appoint or, or do, but, um, and I had talked to Don, and I would agree to, um, document things on the map that we have. Um, I'm willing to take the phone calls and refer them to Walter, Walter will do any digging that needs to be done, he'll organize that. Um, usually he organizes that with the, um, with the funeral homes, which we're not even a part of anyway, so. There is some thought that's been in place for a little while, just Don hadn't made the actual, um, commitment for say, to say that he is no longer the agent, and passes the buck.
But the other side of the coin is, is that I learned on Sunday, when I was doing the warrants, that the cemetery workers had been working. We don't even know that. So there's no communication to the select board. And, and just think about it, if somebody came to you, or the, or the sheriff, or somebody came, and, and you're gonna say, huh? I don't know anything about that. So we have no control over our own people, and so it, to me, it's like a, it's an out of control situation, and I don't know how to get it back.
Well, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, um, Kim, you should write down, if you're willing, write down all these duties that you've just mentioned, and, and the name following, who, who's doing what. So we, we have a total list of things that need to be done relative to the cemetery. Select board is the, is the cemetery commissioner, but who does this, who does this, who does this? All the things that need to be done, and what name is assigned. And once that list is created and adjusted, I don't know who to talk to.
You got more problems than that, but I, I won't talk about it except in the executive session. I just learned something about forty-five minutes ago, so.
Well, okay, that's.
You guys need to get a hold of the cemetery and organize it, and get somebody in charge of it, and run it. You guys have to, and you've been saying, you know, you guys just said, at some time we have to, no. Six months ago, you should have, that's the problem.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I think the plan right along was Don to turn it over and hopefully Walter take it on as agent. Um, is, is the feeling I have in the conversations I've gotten from Don, he, he's been doing it for so long that that was Don's intention.
But, but Sean?
I think there's a problem, we've always been dancing around, uh, Don's, uh, you know, if he got let go, then, uh, you know, the, the world might, might collapse. And I, I just think that, that, yeah, it's, he's been saying that, well, he, he may give it up, he may give it up, and every time he turns around, it was. Well, I think he's. And, uh, I'll move forward with it.
But the other problem is, is that they don't, Don Lawrence doesn't talk to the select board. And they, they're, they think that they're, they, so they're working, and we don't even know that. And if you turn it over to Walter, it's like Don, and he might do the same thing.
But if he doesn't know any different, if you don't set the ground.
Well, that's what I mean.
Rules now, you know, he would, I'm sure, follow through. I knew about it only because he asked just the other day for more time sheets and asked me when the time needed to be turned in. This was Thursday or Friday last week, and I said, you need to have it in by Sunday for Michelle to do her, her, uh, bookkeeping. And, um, that's how I knew they had been working, and he was concerned about the amount of hours that he had worked. He said, oh, that wasn't just one week, it's been a couple weeks. So yes, in fact, he, they had been working a couple weeks. And Bill, yes, I did get the same, I did get the same phone call that you got, Bill, I referred them to you, I believe, is what you're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I sent them to you.
I, I still say, what Don envisions is, is nice, but we should get it all down, list it all down on paper. The select board looks at it and say, yeah, we agree with that, but we disagree with this part, and this is how it's going to be. So I'd say collect what's happening or what's proposed to happen, we look at it, we decide yes or no. Otherwise, we're never gonna fix anything. we're never going to fix anything.
Yep.
All right. Well, tomorrow then I'll make up the list, okay, as to how it stands right now, using Don's name as to what Don does. And then when it comes time for any replacement, you can then say this is what their responsibilities would be and you pick the appropriate person to go with those responsibilities. I'll do that tomorrow.
The other thing with that too, Kim, is, is if you have, and you must have, how many burials or, or funerals have during the course of a, a year? Or what have we done in the past ten years? I mean, if we're looking for a piece of property, again, I, I have to go back and say, we have to get an idea of what we're looking for. Can we just get an acre of property? And is that going to last us for the next ten years? How long would an acre of?
Yeah, it's in the, I put it in the town report every year.
Right.
So in my blur of a town report, it tells how many births, deaths and burials we have.
Yeah, that, that's fine. But I'm just saying, in the thing that you're creating, if you could just make a note over, uh, you know, the average of the past ten years has been ten and whatever number.
Okay.
Is it, but is everybody okay with them working now? And, and they know the rules that they have to be six feet apart? They're not supposed to ride in the same truck and the car and all that stuff? I mean, I don't know.
Maybe it's a conversation that has to be had with.
I mean.
Or Walter. Or both workers.
I, I can meet with Walter or something. I mean, somebody ought to meet with Walter and just say, I mean, as of today, route crews, as long as they're separated, can, can work as of today. Landscapers can't today. Uh, the thing is, is they have to go in technically in, in two vehicles and stuff like that. I don't know if they're aware of that, but.
I don't know either.
I certainly think it'd be a good point to pass that along to them.
Well, it's a little embarrassing to, to hear that they've been working for two weeks and we know nothing about it.
Nope.
Well, plus the fact that we did ask our lawn care not to do any lawn care on the town's property when we had our own town employees out there working. That, yeah.
Right.
I agree.
It's just out of control. We have, we just have to grab control of it somehow.
Yep.
All right. So if you do that, start the list, maybe that'd be, and if, if we could run in, somebody could, you know, I don't, I, you know, you could really theoretically, you should talk to Don Lawrence, and he's the one who should be telling these guys that they shouldn't be running in the same truck and all that kind of stuff. Because he is still technically a leader.
I don't think so.
No?
I don't think you appointed anybody.
Well, that's true. That, that's what I understand. Haven't appointed anybody. I, I think. I don't know. I haven't seen the list, but that's what Kim is telling me.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, because.
Part of that list.
Bill, did you check?
It was empty.
Yeah. And is he a one year or is he a three year?
Three years.
So then, then if you appointed him last year for three, then he still is for, or was this year his last year?
Yeah, but you accepted his resignation.
He didn't resign.
No, no, that's Jay. That was Jay, the health officer that resigned and he was a three year.
He never resigned.
Don never resigned.
Let me look.
No, he never resigned because I talked to him. Stan and I talked to him.
Right.
Okay. I think that was, that was Jay.
I think that was Jay.
Okay, let me look. But the other thing is, I'm working on, uh, right now, using, uh, the, no, no one in the state that I can find has good cemetery, um, policy and I'm working on that right now. So just want you to know that.
Springfield's policy. I have it right here.
It's no good.
Okay. But it's a policy.
Yeah, it does.
No policy.
Bill, is there even such thing?
I have their policy and, and I'll use a bit of it, but yes, I have their policy.
Yeah.
Bill, is there even any such thing as a cemetery agent? Because in the past, we were told when we brought it up at any of our meetings, our, our VLCT meetings, that there is not a cemetery agent. Is there or is there not?
There are two forms of running a cemetery are the select board is the commission or you have a cemetery commission that is either appointed or elected and that's set up by the select board. And then they run it independent of the select board.
Right. So there's not really a one-person cemetery agent title?
No.
I didn't think so.
No.
You mean in the state.
And we've always left it like it was.
Right.
It's always been that way. Even when Arrowwood Senior was there.
Right.
So we can talk about it forever. What we need to do is inform them of the regulations and we need to get cemetery regs. And, and I think, Kim, you need to write, if you can, write all the stuff down.
Yep.
And we can deal with it at the next meeting.
I mean, does somebody want to meet with these guys? I'd be willing to do it if we can get.
Well, I certainly will. I, I, you know, Stan and I, we, why don't we set it up and we can do this? I don't know where. Um, Don Lawrence doesn't have a computer, so I don't know how you're going to do it.
Cemetery.
We can do it. We can do it, you know, outside someplace six feet apart, but.
In the cemetery.
Yeah. What do you think about Stan? And if I see Don, I don't see, I see, I don't see him anymore because, you know, it just happened to be, I was at the post office same time he was.
All right. Sometimes I do see him, uh, when, uh, around nine o'clock, he usually goes in for his mail. I can try to catch him there.
You can give him a call at home too. Call him at home. He'll answer.
He has a telephone, yeah.
All right, we'll try, we'll try to. Okay, the, 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 the last thing then is that.
Hey, hey, Joe, Joe, I got a question. Uh, Bill, did, uh, you hear back from Tim Muller?
I did not. I didn't hear anything from him. It was a little bit surprising, so I'll try him again.
Okay.
All right. So the, the last thing is the purchasing policy. Has everybody had a chance to look at it and read it? I know Bill sent it over to the attorney and he made a change.
I think we should do, do, do one of this. It wasn't, it wasn't.
I mean, if you don't want to do now, now, put it in the next meeting.
I can't understand what is being said.
Do, do we want to put it, put it in the next meeting?
Yeah, that will, that will work fine if you want to wait till next meeting.
Okay. Why, why don't we just put this off in the next meeting? And then we can, we can, everybody will have a chance to really take a look at it and we can deal with that. Is that okay with everybody?
Yep, fine.
So, uh, do we have any other business?
I, I've got one, I've got one question. Uh, some time ago, maybe six months ago, maybe longer, we were going to get a traffic study on one twenty-one and thirty-five at the intersection down in Athens now, uh, because of the way the signs are laid out. Uh, whatever became of that?
They, uh, they discouraged me for doing it. I could still do it. The sheriff discouraged me from doing it. The, because of, uh, there isn't anything that is going to come out of doing it. Uh, you know, uh, but I can, I can have them do it. I can ask them again.
Yeah, but Kathy made that request and I think we all agreed to have it done.
Yeah. Okay, I'll ask them.
Any other business?
I'd like to talk something in executive session just for a second.
You want to go into executive session?
Yeah, if there's nothing else.
Okay.
Uh, do we have any publics left or public comment?
Do we have any public comment?
So this is Suzanne and I just want to say it's great to be back. And, um, I think the substantive nature of this meeting is testament that the town's business goes on despite the virus. And I just want to say, um, and I know many citizens feel this way. Uh, grateful we are to the select board and to everyone who's doing such a great job. Bill, Kim, Danny, uh, keeping our town going. And there's no place I'd rather be than Grafton, Vermont right now.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yeah, I have one little thing, Joe.
Go ahead.
Uh, just so the select board's aware, I was going to write you guys a letter, but of course, the week went by and I didn't. Uh, just the fire department had a small incident, uh, last week on scene that a truck went off the road. And I just wanted to share our appreciation for your highway foreman, that he, uh, did an outstanding job. It is out of a little pickle. Uh, not the first time he has, but I, it was one of those things he really did go above. And just want you guys to be aware.
Danny, thank you, Danny.
I don't think Danny's on it anymore, but.
Uh, yeah, he is. He's still there. He's just muted.
Uh, it's always fun when they call.
I, I did not think he was going to get that truck out. And apparently it only took him five minutes. The truck was in a real, real mess. And it only took Danny five minutes or ten minutes, uh, to get that thing. He did a neck of the town.
It took less to get it stuck.
Let's not go there.
Any other public comment?
No, no injuries, only somebody's pride. Uh, yeah, that and a little body work.
Oh, oh.
Uh, it was very little, just a little toolbox, but it was a minor, uh, the guy.
Yep.
It happens.
All right. The next, the next meeting is, um, on May fourth. And we need a motion to adjourn, uh, to executive session.
Thank you. Yeah.
Are you inviting anyone into executive session?
Uh, just you, just Kim.